I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That actually brings a point I wanted to remember. We could bring a small play with us, make sure that we bring one with us tomorrow. So I'll just pack that for the plays tomorrow on Christmas. So first item, we'll just actually, oh, any additions of allegiance? We do have a couple I see.
I have two. I have a compliance hearings officer and Dollar General O L C C application.
Okay. Do we wanna have any discussion on the low boy today? Should we put that on as an addition? We'll be making, taking action on it tomorrow, but.
And then Kevin was gonna try to show up tomorrow.
Okay, so he can just give the presentation tomorrow.
Okay. As far as I know, he was gonna go to Christmas.
Yeah, I did. Alright, sounds good. Alright, first item in, the budget resolutions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In your packet, you should have several resolutions. And if the first one, I'm not sure if it's staying in your packet or not, but we do have a supplemental budget hearing for the road department on their significant greater repair that didn't make last fiscal year. That budget hearing notice didn't make the paper for publication. So we have to push that back. It should show up in the paper tomorrow and then we'll have that hearing and then do that resolution. Um, I guess that's January fourth.
Yeah.
Yeah, January.
So we won't even act on this tomorrow, but we'll have to wait.
No, no. So I, I wasn't sure if it stayed in your packet or not, so I just wanted to say that if it did. So that would be resolution two zero two one dash zero five. So first we need to notify the public because we're moving money from reserves. That's requires the notification to the public, gives them an opportunity to comment on it before we take action on the protection. Okay?
And the reserves was for the equipment expenditure.
Yeah, it's the equipment reserves.
Okay.
So resolution twenty twenty one dash zero six is in the matter of an appropriation transfer. This is for our title three fund. Had significant more personnel services paid out due to fire response and less materials and services. So what this does is just move thirty thousand dollars from materials and services to personnel services. Overall, fund expenditures stay the same, so this can happen just with this resolution process.
Seven dash zero six.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I understand the part about moving. Are we pretty good on that for like next year's budget? For the same amount? I guess we don't really budget that much amount. We get every year a certain amount of it.
Well, actually, we have good news on this one. I did not think that we would see a reauthorization of rural schools, but it was embedded in the infrastructure act. And so the news we saw, it's a three-year authorization and it goes back to twenty seventeen level of funding. So we will see something a little bit more than this federal resource line of about twenty-three thousand. Um, we'll see what that looks like as it comes in. This, obviously, we only get twenty-two thousand, but we're spending, you know, this year right now, we've spent a hundred thousand and then we have significant equipment purchases that are going to be made or one piece of equipment.
Yeah.
So this fund will not look the same next year, even with that reauthorization of rural schools. Uh, we did get some reimbursement on the, I take that back. That twenty-two thousand dollars that's sitting in there is the FEMA reimbursement. We haven't received our, we haven't received an S R S allocation for this year, should be in the spring. That twenty-three thousand that's sitting there is the FEMA on the brat on fire. Um, still just now starting the paperwork for any kind of FEMA reimbursement on the bootleg and the patent. Um, again, this fund will look different next year though. We're gonna spend a big chunk on that piece of equipment.
That's what the snow cats coming out of this.
Yeah, I think.
But generally, do we, when we don't have those equipment expenditures, does this total stay close to that? Or has it been built up over time prior to?
It's been building up over time. I would say typically our title three allocation that shows up in this fund is around seventy thousand dollars. Uh, we haven't seen the fire response like we have this year out of this fund. Uh, we typically don't have staff levels like we did this year. Um, so this is an unusual difference and it has built up.
I didn't hear the last part.
It has built up. Okay, any more questions on that? I'm thinking you guys will take action on these tomorrow.
On zero six.
Yeah.
Zero seven, zero eight.
I guess if you change your mind, you can, but.
The only one we can't is the oh five.
Correct.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty one dash zero seven is again in a matter of an appropriation transfer and this is for uh the special transportation fund. Money. Uh, there's been more capital outlay expenditures due to full payment of a vehicle. So even though we match it with our own dollars, we have to pay for the full purchase of the vehicle. And so just a little bit of an adjustment on the capital expenditure here, increasing that eighteen thousand and then moving money from materials and services, which there's plenty of funds available there. And this program or this fund is all state or federal funding.
Okay.
What'd you say?
You're just catching the top of man's head with your.
I'm sorry, I'll do it again. It's hard to write and.
No, don't worry. Sweet little.
Backtalks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You're good. This is a brand new deal. There you go.
You guys are gonna adjust it for people, you know, having to talk about.
Well, you may.
At least I can see your head.
Yeah.
I enjoy seeing hands big head, right?
Wait till you get up.
Wait till you get up.
I'm not there yet. So I can.
Or walk into that way, right?
Okay, any questions on the special transportation fund? Adjustment there.
That's good.
Okay. Next one is twenty twenty one dash zero eight. And this is in the matter of unanticipated revenue at the airport fund. Obviously had significant more fuel uh sales than we planned on, which equates to significantly more fuel purchases. So this does both things. We brought in more fuel revenues and we have to expend more money to buy the fuel. And so we just raised both of those up. Um, hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So is.
We're not losing money, we're not making money.
Yeah, we're not. This isn't just a simple moving money around. This is an increase.
This is an increase in the overall revenues of the fund and the overall expenditures of the fund to an equal amount. So your budget stays in balance, but we didn't, the reason we can call it unanticipated revenue is we typically don't see those kinds of fuel sales. So we couldn't have known when we budgeted that that's what it was going to be. So it's unanticipated and allows us just to increase both sides of that budget.
For a maximum increase of about two hundred and fifty, okay?
And this is another reason why I brought up on column today, we're making that an airport presentation that community and that it takes. Because. Yeah, it can't report. Um, it's not looking like it can be reported. And we just do not have enough storage to make it. We can't buy it. We have to buy fuel right then. We can't buy fuel and then set on it or anticipate increases or in amounts or anything. I mean, we really, really need another, some more storage out there. So, 'cause I don't wanna have to go through that again. I mean, that's a job.
Well, I really hope that this year was, you know.
Yeah.
We see that every single year we're going to be.
Yeah.
A lot of issues, yeah. So. Really.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's, that's good. It's good to see. And it isn't just, just fire. You know, we've seen a lot of other aircraft as well, a lot of some of those doing hop and planes and stuff come through, a lot of groups and stuff. So it's good to see.
That's not the jet fuel, though.
No, yeah, you're right.
We don't split it out in here. It's all locked in together.
There has been more traffic.
Yeah.
They're doing touring and stuff, running out and playing in Alhambore Desert.
Right, right.
That's true, so.
Okay, alright, so I'm good with that one.
Okay, next one is twenty twenty one dash zero nine. This one is a little bit more complicated and what this appropriation transfer does is help, well, we are going to fund the nuisance um officer that is going to be paid out of the building. When we budgeted, we wasn't, we weren't sure what that position was gonna look like, where it was gonna land, what exactly the duties would be. So we budgeted a position in central services, not knowing. What this, what this appropriation transfer does is it decreases that personnel services in one-on-one, one-on-two, increases general fund transfers and then increases revenue in the building funds and increases their personnel services for that position. Uh, because we're a half a year basically, it is a, it's not, this is not the fully loaded annual cost of this position. It's just. So there was a lot of, a lot of moving parts on that and I debated on notifying the public on that because the increase in four-on-two is, well, it's not too something, but um, it's just something a little bit different. We typically don't like to transfer appropriations between funds. We can. Budget law allows it, but usually I think when you're increasing funds expenditures to some extent like that, you wanna give more notification, but it's allowable just this way too.
And there's not, there wasn't a really another way to do it, correct?
No, because there's, there's no uh, not a lot of room in their materials and services to cover that cost. And so, and but a couple of reasons on that. Their materials and services budgetarily maybe could have covered it, but nuisance officer is a general fund uh responsibility. In fact, I think we were um provided some O R S language quite a few years ago that shows that building fund, like revenues and surpluses are not supposed to cover that cost.
Yeah, but it's, it's, I actually consider code enforcement.
Sorry, I keep saying.
So that's how.
So then that portion of it, if it's nuisance, it's gotta be general fund. Um, code enforcement, building fund dollars can help cover that, so.
So out of the general fund, we'll probably have to put some money in there next year just for the nuisance side of it.
Yeah, so in the past we have been. We've been um funding, I think it's about thirty-seven thousand dollars to uh for the nuisance side of. Let's see if it's in here. Yeah, thirty-three, thirty-three thousand for a nuisance officer and then also like costs associated with some of those nuisances.
Been funding it in the past?
Mm-hmm.
What's been going to you?
Staff and then also if we have.
Cause we didn't have a position.
No, it's, it's part of a position in there right now. There, you know, there must be documentation.
June, April, December, so I mean.
So there, I guess there might need to be a little bit more discussion, especially when we start budgeting next year, what, what we think that you know, nuisance work cost versus the code enforcement cost. Make sure the health fund stays.
Taking a budget time, when do you think you'll have the dates? What dates are you looking at or have you got that for yet?
Well, you know, some conversation came up uh the other day. I need to start putting that calendar together, 'cause I think things are already getting filled up. So uh um, budget assumptions will probably be the very first meeting in February. We're gonna bump that up a little bit. I know typically we stay away from the end of April for budget meetings, but I need to stay away from the first week of May this year for budget meetings. So I don't know if that kicks us back into the second week of May or if we move it up in April. Does anyone have anything off the top of their head that?
I won't be here for a part of me.
Okay. Okay.
And April for a part of me. To me, it'd be better to do it in April too, but because we've had an early fire season this year, everything, it seems like we've hit the ground running harder and they, but.
Yeah, and moving up that assumptions meeting allows us to build in any decisions that are made during assumptions before we get the packets out and still allows managers about a month to get them back to me.
So would the budget maybe be at that assumption meeting just so that I know when the dates are, no?
No, once I build that draft calendar, which I might do it today, I'll send it out to everybody just in draft form. Uh, one of the first meetings in January, we will, you know, you, you appoint your budget officer, you approve the budget calendar, uh, you do those things, one of the first meetings in January, so. I'll, I'll work on a draft calendar right now. Are you guys uh okay discussing these resolutions tomorrow without me being present? I hadn't planned on going, but.
Yeah, I, you should be just fine.
Okay. Okay.
And we'll just wait on two dash zero five.
Yeah, yeah, I'll check the paper tomorrow and Charlie, Tracy, I, I think there was just some miscommunication from emails and staff and so. Should be in this paper tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next item. Uh, Jake Reer, Lake County Community Justice and Warner Mountain Medical. See you then, thank you.
Yeah.
About a year with Warner Mountain Medical Clinic. We have within our drug court criminal justice commission, drug court grant. We have budgeted thirty-six thousand dollars for two years for Warner Mountain Medical Clinic. Um, that's Dr. Graham, that's Lisa Kaye, and then Amy Field as well. Where's the license? Psychiatric nurse practitioner.
Psychiatrist.
So we're psychiatric. They're part of our treatment court. And uh, this is the money we have repaid for up to twelve hours a month of their time. They're part of our team, they go, they go, they're voting members on our team. They are regular contributors of information, especially with Lisa being our jailers. She knows our clients firsthand from when they first walked in the door. She's with, she follows into the process, providing health and medical. Amy does psychiatric medication monitoring and they also do our medical, they also run our medical system treatment program. Which uh which we're active in. So it's up to forty-five hundred dollars a quarter, um, thirty-six thousand for two years. And uh, any costs to attend national or state conferences can be paid by community and justice, should fund be available. So we have standards, we have to adhere to national and state standards and everybody has to be trained. So we're trying to get people back to training, we have a lot of new folks joining our team. We're gonna try and move everybody up and running on the train, with the national train, so we can follow compliance with our standards.
Okay, sounds good, so.
Does uh costs go up or down?
What's that?
Did you say whether this cost went up or down?
The cost went down from last biennium.
Okay.
Last biennium, we were paying nine thousand dollars a quarter.
Okay.
Seventy-two thousand dollars uh for the biennium. I thought this company, this another, no, our grant funding went down today. They understand that.
Okay.
They understand that, man. Dr. Graham and Lisa both feel strongly about the program, uh, the big supporters of the program. Regular attendance, appreciate that, their attendance is regular. Lisa more often than not, depending on my Dr. Graham. It's great having all of our team with medical professionals involved.
That's great, good. Okay.
I'll be there tomorrow.
Yeah. That'll be good. Just to give good information.
I don't know, it's like close up there. I can hear what's happening.
Yeah, it's good, it's always good to share. So the next item we have is on border parole and post-prison supervision, Lake County I G A.
Yes, the I G A for the border parole is uh to provide at least one hearings officer, what vice at a county acceptable to, and trained and sort of led by the board gonna be responsible for building all parole, post-prison supervision violations, violation hearings right in the jurisdiction. Um, there is a cohort hearings officer who um, throughout the state, um, there's not very many counties left. I think there's probably five to seven of those counties left that conduct their own hearings locally. The rest of them get their packets together, coordinate with the jail and hearings officer and get everything ready and the hearings officer can say and calls the individual in jail and conducts the hearing over the phone. Um, I'm, I'm not a fan of that because then again, there again, we have someone who doesn't know nothing about Lake County, knows nothing about our process, knows nothing about our shop, making decisions for our sanctions. Yes, they base it on our recommendations and what we put on paper. But also having, as a partial hearings officer, having my staff available readily readily available, should there be questions, we, we can best do that stuff here locally. Right, um, we record our hearings, um, we have to keep them for seven years, we keep all our paperwork, um, we write up all of our write-ups and they go off to the board. And uh very rarely are we able to write it down, but we make a pretty strong recommendation for a heavy sanction and the floor board comes in over, overrides this and reduces that sanction. It's been more common lately with our board that they override this going up, which isn't a bad thing. Um, just recently, we had a, I conducted a hearing on an individual who crime spree out and made out and uh we recommended eighty-eight days jail for the local sanction. And uh, the floor board, what we wrote down, we wrote his parole for eighty-eight days, so he doesn't get released till he serves that forty-eight days and then that time he serves in jail gets tacked on even to supervision, so.
Gotcha.
Uh, he's gonna do the full time on supervision and then the subcon time and free time, he's gonna go. So it's, yeah, in that, in that case, it worked out well.
Is he gonna have community service?
What's that?
Community service time also or not?
I'm not sure what his probation entails. Um, he went, he was recently, he's gonna be sentenced to probation, is my understanding. So I'm assuming there may be some community service with that. But I don't know, that's up to the district attorney. But nevertheless, keeping our decisions here locally, um, instead of using hearings officer from another jurisdiction. When there are conflict cases, I reach out to one county, one county, and you John. It's definitely, they're done here as far as many derises and has, there's probably like three or four, twenty-nine years here. They've taken on and the reason they're taking those on is because I don't want to affect the sanction because we have someone that on not believe or vacation and need to defend, so I decided I'll take it up.
Right.
So, and although there's not any revenue listed, on how much that is, there's a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in state funds. What they do is they look at history, how many hearings we conducted in the past two years and then they, they figure, and then they add that up, I'll just state like hearings for the five to seven counties that did their own hearings and then we get a slice of the pie. It's been about thirty, two, three, four thousand dollars last couple of years. I'd rather have that. I'd do that, I'd do that. I'd do the ones for free, just to keep things low. So any revenue we could bring in is very young, very young favors, I guess.
Any questions?
On this?
Sounds good. Really straightforward, thank you.
How's uh, we got time for another discussion? How's drug court going?
It's starting to pick up. Starting to pick up a little bit.
You have support?
Depends on the day we, I guess it really depends on the day. And then for the most part, we have the support from everybody. Um, we just had a meeting in the last two weeks talking about processes and holding folks accountable on our sanction, continuing sanctions and how we're gonna do things. And then reminder of how we get folks into the program. And um, so it's a work in progress. The team is a work in progress. Some referrals then. So I would consider that a success.
Thank you.
Alright, so, well, appreciate your time, Jake.
Thank you. So I will be there tomorrow for the discussions.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Alright, any other questions?
Yeah, it's looking like mine this morning.
What's that?
You answered all mine this morning.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks Jake. Darwin Johnson's not here, so.
I'll put my head in his office on the way back.
Okay, sounds good. Um, we both have a compliance hearing officer discussion. Do we wanna discuss that now or do we wanna wait for it?
I told my texting when we were ready, just because our docket was pretty full this morning.
Well, and then they didn't even sit.
I know.
Well, they're gonna need to get right up there.
Then I'll sit while you're like, no.
Hey boss. Okay, I won't, I won't.
Cause you're right on time.
I know. Couple minutes early, which is completely out of character.
So boss, Amelia's prepared a little bit to say about her youth program.
Cool.
That would be wonderful. I am always willing to have anybody speak but me.
Sounds like you're out.
So.
I'll give you the hot seat.
Is this like for the record, we're on public meeting status and all that? Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Alright, so for the record, my name is Craig Foster. I am actually at this moment the past president of the Lakeview Bowman's. We just had officer elections and we have a whole new board. I will stay on as a board member, but since our new president actually has a day job, he had to work today, so. So you're stuck with me. Alright, so the purpose of why we are all here, these are all members of either Lakeview Bowman's or Lakeview four H program or the S three D A program, which is a archery in the school news program.
No.
No, it's not archery in the school?
It's uh.
It's a scholastic team.
S three D A, it's scholastic archery.
Scholastic archery, okay.
So it is in the schools in a lot of places. Um, the main requirement is that they be enrolled in school.
Okay, so anyway, alright, and the Lakeview Bowman's hosts those two programs that are indoor range down the main street. So uh, the primary reason we're here is to thank the three of you in Lake County for um working with us on the parking and for giving the remainder of our loan, which was no small amount. I think it finally worked out to about seventy-five hundred, eight thousand bucks that um, and that along with we were in, just before fair, we were in financial straits. I honestly didn't know how we were gonna survive. Okay, and so kinda made a blanket plea to the archers of Lake County and said, hey, if you guys wanna keep this thing going, we're, we're broke on January first. What are we gonna do? And everybody stepped up. It was surprising. I was shocked at the number of people that stepped up, got involved. Um, and really honestly kinda pointed out what I've been doing wrong and why we got into that. really honestly kind of pointed out what I've been doing wrong and why we got into that. So, we hosted a turkey shoot open house that Sherry Jaber took the lead on and got some donations and we made a couple thousand dollars on that. Um, we had seen a fairly significant increase in membership. And we have a whole new board with new officers and about six additional board members that we didn't have before that have stepped up. So we're going the right direction. So our current status right now is the indoor range is still open twenty-four sevenths. We host about twenty-two 4H kids that are enrolled in the R34H program. And Larry and Teresa are the, are the 4H leaders for that. Um, we also host kinda intermittently the S3DA kids, which there's six of those separate from the 4H kids. Um, Craig Delarm from Paisley is the, is the, actually now the state S3DA coordinator. And several of those kids are Paisley kids, so they're not in the range as much unless there's a, a specific event. Um, and then we have twenty-nine members. Um, we have uh, membership strategy and we have a family membership. Um, for hundred?
Hundred twenty-five.
Hundred twenty-five dollars a year and then an individual membership for seventy-five dollars a year.
So you guys lowered the price a little bit?
For the individual members. Um, we kept the family membership the same. Um, that works out to eighteen family memberships and if you add the people that are in those individual families, we've got about fifty-seven people shooting down at the range now. Okay, and that's in addition to the 4H kids and the S3DA kids. Um, we've got forty-three hundred bucks in the bank, which on January first, we were gonna be broke. On the first August, we were gonna be broke on January first. By the time we paid the insurance taxes and kept the lights on where we're gonna be. I think we were gonna have forty bucks in the account. So it's almost January first when we got forty-three hundred in the account. We paid the taxes and paid the insurance. So we're in good shape. Um, we have leagues start, our normal winter league starts in early January and runs through early March. We usually have about twenty to twenty-five shooters that participate and went on league. About half of those will be members and the other half will be people that aren't members of the boat club that they come down to shoot winter league. Okay? Um, we changed our three D shoot structure. We'll still have the February shoot. We can't cancel the last two July shoots because of fire danger. And that's one of the reasons we've gotten the financial straits we did. And so we moved that July shoot to May. And we're in the process of getting our specialty use permits for that for service and should feel pretty easy. Mike Ramsey is a district ranger, is one of our new board members, so. That should help. Um, so overall, between the folks behind me stepping up to the plate and the county helping us out financially, we're in good shape. We're gonna, we're, the future is bright, a heck of a lot brighter than the one of the first August. So that's all I have for you. Sherry's daughter wanted to make a comment about archery. Youth archery.
Thanks very much.
You bet.
Yeah.
Hi, um.
What's your name?
I'm Amelia. Um, I.
Amelia what?
Sports.
He asked a lot of questions. Go ahead.
Um, hi, my name's Miller Sports. I'm in seventh grade at Edo School. Um, I am the president of Silver Slingers 4H Club. There are twenty-two members at, in the 4H club. Uh, we, the 4H club uses the bow club at least three times a month to practice. Um, this year I am entered in the international Vegas shoot. Um, they, my teammate and I are going together um, in February. We use the bow club at least once a week to practice to go to Vegas. And
Did you, did you shoot a target bow?
Uh, yes.
With the big stabilizer sticking out?
No. Not really.
No stabilizer?
There's stabilizer.
You got sights?
Mm-hmm.
Did you shoot a lion's favorite point here?
Um, yeah. Sometimes. Yeah.
Have you competed in any other events before?
Um, I've went to Ben and I've gone to Bioware.
Good.
Yeah.
So you're hand confident?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Pretty fun.
Mm-hmm.
You shoot a release or with fingers?
Uh, release.
Good, that's a good deal. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the presentation.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Good job, man.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Cause we had a little, we had a little push gal come up, cause you shot her.
Prepared for anything.
Just go up and answer questions.
Just answer questions. He's got lots of questions.
So you state your name for the record, that's how it starts.
Um, I'm Rebecca Lucas. I am one of the coaches for S3DA and the 4H program. Um, I shot for nine years in the 4H program. I shot for one year through S3DA. I did have, I could have went to Illinois for a four ride through S3DA, but then COVID hit and I got second lucky still. Um, but I'm helping coach the kids and then.
So what's your plan?
My plan right now is I'm doing college shoot KCC to arrange my.
So are you going to continue to shoot competitively?
Um.
Get on the team, basically?
Right now, I just think I'm gonna just do three D archery shoots. Like, there's a three D archery shoot in Reading and there's seventy-five targets. And around two thousand people, I think it's about? Two to three thousand.
I think it's a max of one to three five.
And that's a really fun shoot. We meet a lot of new people. Um, there's archery booths over there like Hoyt, Botet, um, Matthews, um.
Good job. For being put on the spot.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Alright, um, anything else that you guys wanna present or?
Other than just thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
It's great to hear the good energy you guys all have.
Yeah.
After five days of fair, I don't know if it was good energy or not.
Still refreshing your batteries.
And you guys have to know that uh, our participation in the fair part was the Lucas family with some fairly uh, unskilled assistant.
Be great.
Always referring to me. Anyway, uh, the Lucas family made that happen. We, we still wouldn't have been able to do it without them.
I appreciate it, being able to call you in the last seconds and try to work a deal and.
It was, when Boggs let it, sent the email out and says, hey, this is what's happening. They'll relieve our debt. It's like, okay, we've got so much going on that weekend, cause with I have two clubs, OHA, and then this on top of it, and we were out of town the first two days of fair because I have grand jury stuff in Medford every month. So it was a lot of phone calls, even when I was over there on breaks and everything, making sure that the parking was done and everything. But yeah, we managed to make it work. Us two, my, our four kids and a handful of the bow club members that spent a lot of time at the fairgrounds.
So.
I appreciate it.
It's proof positive that if you want something done, give it to a good person.
This is one time that I wasn't told, I'll kill you if you volunteer for something else.
Well, thank you guys. Really appreciate it. Thank you. It really is great seeing you all today.
Yeah, thank you.
And we love how the kids are a part of it.
I have kids this year that have never picked up a bow and never shot more than in the past. I have four or five members from my last year's team or before that that have came back. Everybody else was new. I've got a handful. I'll say I've got eight to ten kids that are shooting, or we have eight to ten kids that are shooting 4H male in tournaments that are trying to go to the 4H state tournament in June. So a lot more participation this year.
And Craig Delarm, he's a big asset too. Oh yeah, we're thankful for him and that, so.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
Yeah.
Very much.
I think he'd have been here today too. Is he playing there today?
Or expect some lunch for the kids.
Down there, I could do that.
Alright, alright.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you guys.
Never stop.
Thank you, Greg.
Alright, we'll see you. Um, alright, uh, Darwin, you wanna give us uh, plan, commission recommendations?
You want me to do it from here or come up there?
However you wanna go.
So here's, sorry, the stuff has been needed to get to you. Cause I've been just crazy busy. Um, what you have there is your agenda summary. Um, with just a quick summary of where we're at today with uh, planning commission positions. Uh, as well as um, all six applications that were received um, for what was originally two positions. One that's vacant, one that was ending um, at the end of the year. Yesterday I had um, had Allison Parks resign from our planning commission, so. I love to be even a little more stressed with uh, with what we've got going on. So in the summary, it says, you know, nobody now has served longer than five years that's currently on our planning commission. Ben Holden has the longest serving, remember having started in, in January of two thousand seventeen. Ben for the last couple of years has been thinking about, was, you know, stepping away from the planning commission. Hopefully he stays for a while now. Um, with this, but we'll see what happens. So I've got three vacancies now, not just two. Um, we had um, you know, a top vote getter, what we did is the planning commission um, met on Tuesday night last week in Crystal Valley. And we had um, four people present that, that gave a uh, you know, a brief summary of themselves. Four applicants, I should say. And then we had one on the phone. One was received um, that day, but I didn't actually see it until the, the next day. So I then sent that out as well and the planning commission also voted on that one. Um, Jill Billard wasn't in the meeting, um, had a conflict, so he was uh, excused and he um, then just was able to read all of them, didn't hear any of the people in person. So one of the applicants, um, uh, Stu Burgess, uh, Burgess from Paisley wasn't, wasn't present, as I said, I received that a little late.
Stu Burgess?
Yeah, Stu Burgess.
Science teacher?
Yeah, yeah, from, from Paisley. Uh, and so, you know, the other, you know, five really had an advantage there for the planning commission, so to speak. Um, but, but what we have is three positions, two expiring actually next year. So those appointments can either be for one year or what we have done in the past is appoint for a full five-year term to finish that one and not have to redo this again next year when those two positions would come available again. Which are a South Lake County position, which was held by Wes Davies, who resigned earlier this year. Who was at the time serving as our chair and now Allison uh, from North Lake. Our, our bylaws uh, that were amended uh, allow for uh, appointments uh, to be made in different geographical regions uh, within our county. We, we actually set it up um, where we have uh, positions, one and five from North Lake. Um, two and three from the South Lake area and then four and seven from the Central Lake area. Which, you know, gives us a, a really good balance. And historically, we've done a really good job of getting representation from those areas. Um, with the six applications that we have, um, we certainly could, could fill that exactly how it's written in our bylaws. However, it says, you know, we're, we, we do this according to um, the following positions as near as possible as can be achieved. So, and again, it is based on, you know, your guys' decision, the recommendation from the planning commission, as well as just who, who we think is best qualified to serve. Um, and you know, their history, maybe of land use or, or sort of on other boards or just the knowledge of, of the county as well. So the, the ORS also allows for that. Um, and, and also requires that we do appoint from different various locations as well as different occupations. Um, which certainly we are currently fulfilling and would certainly within the membership that we had. From the six uh, that have volunteered. Um, I uh, you know, wish I'd gotten to this sooner, so just, you know, know that tomorrow I'm looking for a recommendation, not a recommendation, but actual formal appointment of, of these three positions that are um, you know, two vacant and one that expires at the end of the year to um, and if you guys want me to, I can call into these people to at least have them on the phone and available. Most have already, I, I've talked with and said they wouldn't be available. Nora, even this morning, I called in and said she, she could be available. Um, but does during, work during the day. So if you have any questions for me, I don't need to go on. I know Francis Winters, thankfully my summary was much shorter by far. Usually.
That's a first.
Guess I'm getting tired.
So Darwin, since there's so many.
Yeah.
Um, what are your recommend, what is the planning commission's recommendations? Were you able to get uh, one of these shoots to your office?
I didn't, but I do have an extra copy, so I'll pass this down to you, I think.
There obviously.
So, and, and area, I think you still have. So, um, so this is just a, a summary of what the votes ended up being, so.
So the totals are over on the right-hand side?
Yeah, the total points. So what I did is I, in the, one of these asterisks or something, the only asterisk. Um, um, the only lines are without an asterisk. In the middle of these two tables, says votes for uh, votes counted as follows, twelve points for a first place, ten for a second, eight for a third, six for a four, four for five, and two for six. So the total on that top table on the right-hand column is the total points were weighed, right, with, with how I, I scored these. Now typically in a planning commission setting, you would have, you know, them give a formal recommendation. However, because we've got so many vacancies, we wouldn't even have a full quorum come January, especially with um, you know, if we, if we didn't just go ahead and have you guys make a decision. So they um, were just tasked with after Tuesday, getting to me by Friday, a, a vote. And so these were the votes that I received. Um, five of the planning commissioners, current planning commissioners voted. And um, Nora got uh, the most votes, also three first-place votes. Um, and Erica Anderson got um, two first-place votes. Um, so those are the only two that got uh, first-place votes. And then um, we're all, you know, Erica Anderson, Karen Morgan, and Stu Burgess. Um, all tied came in a, at second with thirty-eight points.
So we have three vacancies. We have a first-place winner.
Yeah, definitely one that I think is a, is a simple.
Tied for second.
Yeah, that one isn't really the question, I think, I think you point um, Nora, when that would be my recommendation. Although I'm not the one that gives you guys a recommendation as the planning commission is tasked to do. I, as staff, I certainly can and ought to do that. So that's definitely my recommendation to point Nora, um, Taylor Perry for position one, which does expire next year. But, but because of her knowledge and, and background, I think it's easy for you guys to make a recommendation that she serve not just for this term uh, ending next year, but just make it official that she serves a full term after that as well. So it's a, it'd be a five-year. So it's a, it'd be a five-year appointment, um, that you guys could give in a motion tomorrow.
So, we, there's a total of four vacancies or one of you?
Three, three vacancies. One, one true, oh, two, two vacancies right now because of her, um, Wes Davies and Allison resigning, but then also, um, Travis Way's position, position seven, um, expires at the end of this year, calendar year.
And this Travis isn't going to reapply?
Yeah, he didn't reapply, he's kind of been inactive for a while.
My understanding too is we have a vacancy, South County, Central County, and?
Yeah, one of the, one each location, yeah.
Yeah, so there's, and, and Burgess, you know, he's a, he's in Paisley, very central. Nora is, um, South.
Yeah.
She's right here, down here, here, Lakeview. So, the other two that we have that also tie for that second place are both, um, residents of the North End. And they're also, that is the last vacancy that we have. So it's either between those two, or we can actually even pick one of the others as well. I don't think that there's anything restricting us. This is just a score of what the planning commission gave. But, and we do have letters from those other individuals as well.
With the North Lake position, um, you know, it, it expires next year. So if you wanted to make just an appointment for one year, that, that'd be totally fine.
Right, true.
You know, with the Central being that one that's actually a four-year, you know, to appoint somebody from outside of the Central area, when we have someone available to serve that Central area, um, you know, it's, it's fine, but it, you know, you know, we try to do as best we can get somebody from that area. We do have an applicant who seems, you know, definitely qualified to do it.
Well, I thought it was interesting upon, uh, Mr. Burgess's application, he actually listed a number of other committees that he would be willing to serve on. He didn't just mark planning commission.
Yeah, and, and we certainly probably have vacancies on some of those committees. So, I mean, you could certainly probably find a place for him if it wasn't on the planning commission.
That's true, but.
And right now, we do have, uh, Joe Villagroga serving in a Central location. Central's kind of been looked at as like Diamond Falls, north to, uh, Picture Rock Pass, essentially. That's, that's kind of what we've always looked at. North has been Silver Lake, Fort Rock, and Crystal Valley, ideally. And then, you know, Lakeview, South End, which is West Side, and, and Adelant Plush.
Right, and we do have three applicants from North.
Yeah, and Adelant Plush has also been, um, you know, kind of represents in the past, um, by the Central as well. And Eric, they've had family on that area, kind of, and, oh, that's kind of a Central. Yeah, we've got three, three applicants from the North End. Um, Erica Morgan, Morgan, or Karen Morgan, Clyde Vaughn, um, and Miles Holing, and Nora Perry, were from down here, and then Stu being the only one in the Central.
So, the North Lake, uh, position actually does expire at the end of this next year. So it's only a one-year term, regardless of whoever you pick.
Unless you decide to go with that.
Unless we decide to go further, yeah.
Practice, which we have done in the past, plenty longer. But you can just make it one, it's, it'd be fine. And we, you know, with those, um, positions in the bylaw, North Lake comes up every four years, or sorry, every two years. They're, every other year, you get, you know, a new member potentially from the North Lake, which is similar to the Central, um, and then similar to South. Although South has got, um, back-to-back years and then skip a year. And then skip a year and then back-to-back years. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, it's great, we've got, you know, options. Um, some years we've just only had, you know, one person for one vacancy or two people for two vacancies. So at least you have something to look at, and if you have any questions for me, you can certainly answer them. I certainly, you know, have some ideas, but, uh, you know, to me, I think to clear them up, it would be great to, to just get maybe a couple of these folks on the phone, but that's, that's completely up to you guys if you want to do that. I'm not sure who's available today, but, you know, we could reach out to them today, and if you need to have, at least chime in on Zoom tomorrow. Either way, I think with the top four vote getters, you know, it's, it's a, should be a pretty, you know, comfortable decision that, that, you know, you know that these people are qualified. Very capable people, all, all six of them, certainly capable, and we appreciate their, their, uh, willingness to serve on such a thankless position. And tough position. And I don't know if this is just a, uh, you know, reflection of, uh, my leadership, or if it's just something changing times, but, you know, having this young little board, uh, you know, when I first came on 11 years ago, um, you know, the average membership was probably somewhere between 15 and 20 years. Like, yeah, and a lot of them had pretty much been there the whole time. Now, again, one, having certified, the last, uh, the last three on that are, are all roughly right of the year. Um, and so now, appointing, or two years, sorry, so appointing, um, appointing these now, three new people, brand new. I mean, essentially have a completely brand-new board.
And this is why I was, I think that we need to have a training.
Yeah, we absolutely have got to have a training. Thank you for reaching out to the state, I, I was going to do that. Just following AOC and you had already done it. So, um, you know, he'll get it figured out, I'll reach out to John again.
John is all for it.
And we may do a combined, you know, a couple of counties in a region, um, but certainly if we can get them there quickly. And, and then know that in January on the 18th, we'll do that combined work session, um, with you, you guys as a board, as well as our planning commission and solar committee. It'll be similar to what I gave to them last January, which is every January when new members come out, we give up, uh, a training, at least a short training that, uh, gives them an idea of what they're doing. I'm going to definitely have my work cut out in the next few months, and we can use folks up to, up to speed with what we're doing. The role and purpose.
Well, land, land use laws can be very complicated, it can be very contentious. And we have to set these people up for success if they're going to be on our board. We have to provide them the tools that they need. So, and having these trainings, I think, you know, the trainings that you provided to Darwin, I think they're great. I think just, you know, having it well-rounded, bring in a DLCD, and bring some of these other entities in, so that they have a good picture of what the landscape is.
And it's repeat training, because, you know, a lot of times,
Yeah.
you know, so much is given to you all at once in a two-hour setting before you actually then start voting on things that first night.
Right.
Uh, can be a little over the head. The main thing I stress to, to, you know, anyone reviewing a land use decision, you know, a planning commission, um, or, or board, would be focus on the criteria, focus on what's in the staff report. The findings are just a draft when they're given to you, but they're ultimately, you know, the criteria, uh, is what, where you have to focus to then make, make a decision on, based on that, that criteria, how it meets the law. So, that first night, you just say, focus on what's in front of you today, we'll go, go over a lot of the other things later.
So, it might be beneficial if, uh, the board attended some of those trainings.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we want to set the trainings up so that commissioners can attend. And so, if, what we may end up doing, I don't know for sure, but AOC is going to be doing this, and there's going to be a charge for attending, it's a one fee for the county. So it doesn't charge extra to have as many people as want to go to it. So, the idea is, it's like, hey, just get people to go. And that includes commissioners, planning commissioners, you know, even planning directors.
Pre-COVID, we, the state would host, um, a two-day training. In the past, I had planning commissioners go that, whoever would want to go to it. We had enough funds, and we always told them, we have enough to get you there, overnight accommodations, you know, mileage, lot, you know, pretty and whatever, I mean, it will get you there, and, um, it shouldn't cost you anything to be there. So, um, Allison was my only person on the planning commission currently that has actually done a formal training. And she did so, you know, at a greater distance than the, than, or Central.
She went all the way to Umatilla County.
Yeah, she was in Umatilla.
Penn.
You know, when, when she did it, but, um.
But if we can do one event, I think a good centralized location, you know, and attract some of these from our counties, be able to.
So, we'll have at least two trainings. So, the January meeting will be a combined work session with you guys and, and the planning commission and the, which also comprises a solar committee right now. And then we will have, um, a, a later training that, that DLCD will also host, um, with the state, which again, will probably be at a Central location. If they decide to have it here, we host, I would assume that the state would want to have, you know, Clough County's probably got a pretty young planning commission as well, some other areas, and then, other counties just, just had a large turnover as well, so. Looks like you've got a timed item, so if you need anything, I'm going to step out.
Yeah, no worries at all, I appreciate you coming down.
I do intend to go up north for my weekly visit with you guys tomorrow, um, if that's what you want. I will gladly be in person.
Are you going to, you guys are going to ride together instead of you?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be a great thing tomorrow.
Sounds good.
And just as a reminder, lastly, uh, of planning commission, or sorry, our planning department fee schedule, that you guys adopted earlier in the year, I think we talked back, about it back in Jan, and adopted to formally go, um, effective January 1st. It's, it's fast approaching, it's posted already on our website, which the applications with the new fees will be posted there. Hopefully, just this week, so.
Sounds good.
So is, uh, Jason going to come and talk to us about the hearing?
Yeah, we got a timed item.
You're just going to text me when it's time. Talk to you then? Quit, but this is your business.
All right, thank you, Darwin.
Yeah, appreciate you coming down.
Going through that with us, and we'll make a decision on that hopefully tomorrow.
That was really good reading, Darwin.
I know, as you have that record timing, I have to take those to the tail.
Good to see you, Darwin.
Yeah, good to see you.
Good morning, thanks.
Good morning. Are you guys ready for good news?
Oh, yeah.
I kind of think it might, right? Well, I know, I am the bearer of good news. Not through only my own efforts, but through the efforts of a bunch of other people. But I'm going to start with.
We did three backpacks?
What?
I thought we were going to get three backpacks out to you.
Oh, well, maybe after January, we can work on that. If you do some practice and wellness. Yeah, okay, so I'm going to start though, because I haven't seen you since the youth summit. Um, I'm going to start with the youth summit, um, which, you know, summer fires and COVID, and we were trying to have a camp at Camp Cottonwood, and we went up and got all excited about, we'll put this here, and we'll have this there. She went in, the next day, it closed the forest because of the fire. And the decision was, okay, what do we do? Do we cancel all of this work and everything? Uh, we decided not to, we pivoted, and we moved everything to in-town. Thank heavens for all our amazing town folk that either jumped through hoops to push our application for using their facility, like, right up to the front and let us sign contracts fast and, and, and all that, or just offered it, bringing the seniors in, it was an incredible support. Um, and just said, do whatever you need to do, use whatever you.
Also to the ski hill.
The ski hill we paid for, but yeah, that was awesome, yeah. Yeah, that was a big day for us. But so we did that, we had, um, only 11 kids. They were not the, um, higher, um, risk kinds of kids that we originally anticipated. They were younger, but then of course, what happened was the Oregon Health Authority put a ton of money out, um, to the state for, uh, social and emotional health to support that in our young people because of COVID. And, um, but it came out really late. So the school districts each got a bunch of money, and then the counties had available to them a bunch of money. And, and most of our seniors worked if they wanted to, because there was all this intern money that they could work, uh, through the summer because of that, those funds. The thing is that it came out really late, this offer of RFP or whatever you call it, um, and, and it also had a minimum of $15,000 you had to apply for. So a, a lot of people just did not have the ability, they didn't have a grant writer sitting there ready to do that, they couldn't think and focus at all that fast. Thank heaven for, uh, Ms. Chrissy Albertson, who jumped in and called them up and said, we could do this, and this, and this. We kind of have these ideas, things that we had talked about before, but that also, she felt really, um, really secure, that would help the social and emotional health, especially with our, our, our suicides, high class range. Um, looking at kids that are underserved, you know, kids that are more on the fringe of, uh, not in the mainstream of, of, of school, maybe they, you know, they don't want to play soccer and volleyball and stuff, but they need something. And so, um, she pitched these kinds of arts, kind, pretty much arts kinds of programs, but everything around kind of a, an idea that we're going to help prevent, uh, uh, suicide and suicide ideation. And they said, we, we love them, um, right mala. So, she did, and we got the grant. And it came down right at the same time we were putting on this whole summit that we moved to the town with. So, we got the money, and right after the summit was done, we jumped in to working on the Oregon Communities Foundation grant. And, um, so what we did was, we, we, let me back up one second. So, from the, the outcome on the surveys, the post-surveys on the Oregon Problem Gambling slash Alcohol Integration Project, uh, from the kids, they did really well in understanding, uh, that positive friends were really important for them to have. You know, we had negative friends, positive friends are what we need. We don't want somebody says, hey, you know, let's go to the quarry and get drunk and jump off the edge. We don't want that, that doesn't help. Um, then we needed a balance of activities in our life, you know, spiritual, uh, physical, mental, emotion, all those different things, family, all these things. And, um, we did bring in the sources of strength model when we did that, uh, because it existed, it was already working in schools in its first year. And they also, um, were able to reflect, uh, on what they stood for. They understood that their values and their choices were really important for their future. They also, uh, really seemed to understand, you know, 100% of them said, we understand how brain development and use of substances or problem gambling. While that brain is developing really fast as a teenager, how that really, um, increases the problems potentially for, for later on in life, and how it's really something you want to avoid. Um, and how gambling itself, uh, is, does, uh, uh, propose that it is a risk. And, uh, how that connection with gambling, I.
I got a question.
Yeah.
So, the problem gambling, that's a problem with youth? And what is the, what it, how do they get in?
Gaming. Not all gaming, I'm not trying to, to diss gaming. I come from a, my kids gained, and they're fully functional adults. But if gaming is something that a youth who is isolated and is already looking for something to self-medicate with, becomes that self-medication, and they just become in here where I'm living in this world. I'm not coming out, I'm not socializing, I don't have balanced activities, I don't have a support group anymore, I'm just doing this. The line between gaming and gambling is so blurred in our current, um, experience with, with, uh, you know, online and, and your phone right there, you can game on that, uh, buying loot boxes, buying, uh, the ability. Oh, so, so you could be playing a game that, you know, Candy Crush, or just any kinds of games where it, it has a really cute little name, that it's a kid's game, but if you want to go to a higher level, some of these games include you have to buy something. You have to buy yourself into a higher level. You have to buy a fancy sword, or a, a fancy out, uh, armor, or whatever, in order to level up.
They call it pay to play, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And this is what is blurring the lines. And so there's the, there's this, there's this thing that's on the radar, uh, about what's going on with gaming, and how that's affecting the, the developing brains, because problem gambling itself increases impulsive behavior. So if gaming is leading to, and, and we, we don't know, the, the, the data isn't there yet, it's leaning that way, but it's not all the way there. And that's why, um, when you add alcohol into that, whether it's an adult or a kid, but especially with a youth, you're looking at alcohol as a depressant. And depression leads to sometimes suicide ideation and suicide, and those things track together. And that was why they had this one-time funding opportunity from Oregon Problem Gambling on this problem gambling alcohol interaction or integration piece. Problem gambling alcohol interaction or integration piece. So that we begin to raise that awareness, just like, let's make families, let's let's make people aware that this is a possible thing, so they. Instead of going down that path, they go, oh, yeah, I'm gonna go to game, but I'm gonna do these other things too, you know. And that that was the goal, to do that, to have have the kids recognize that that was something that they wanted to look at. And so we did that, um. And um, and so all of those things were really great, then we came to the the Oregon Communities Foundation grant. And and in that, we created um a podcast studio. So this is a Yeti, it's a blue Yeti mic, and I know it's red, but I thought the red one was really cool. And um, the red ones were available and the blue ones are all gone. Anyway, I thought red was cool, it looks great in the studio, we have two of them, but they won't stay in the studio. I also, we also have um uh laptops that can be checked out by say OSU extension or a school classroom or anybody like that. And we also have these little like like semi-circular um uh little. They're like portable sound studios sort of, they sit right on the desk, right behind the AMI. And they make the sound better, so the with their, this hooks right into a laptop. So they have a portable sound studio and they can use it in the classroom or something. Um, those can only be checked out by organizations or classrooms, not by individual kids because. That was just a little bit too 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 much to, because the the, we put all kinds of software um. On the computers and editing for sound, editing for video, some of them editing uh. Uh, photo photography, editing kinds of programs, all of that, um. So they're available for the kids, but they can't actually take them home, those home. So we have, but we also have a a stationary studio that's set up. Uh, and I've sent out invitations, not every, oh, I don't have all of your emails, I don't have your master sheet. Um, but the twenty first of December, we're having an open house from eleven thirty to one. And if you tell me ahead of time, I'll have lunch for you. Um, we just want people to see the studio, because even when the community partners, the youth task force people. Who have heard me talking about this, like, you know, for weeks and months, they came into the studio, oh my gosh, you know, their eyes are like. I thought they'd be there about twenty minutes, some of them were there for an hour and a half. They started really thinking about what can we can do, what we can use by having this resource. So there's so many things potential, right now until December thirty first, it's designed for youth, after that, we'll see what happens. We also fully outfitted guitar, I mean guitar, sorry, that's next too. Um, uh, Canon cameras, which are DSL, so they can take video for uh still photography with absolutely everything in them. And these kids can check out on their own with a parental permission slip, so the parent says, yeah, we understand, we're responsible. We have these really super fancy like telescopic lenses, we have wide-angle lenses, we have filters, we have everything they need. To go out on a hike with Jim or a hike with uh Brian Vandenberg or Melissa Maxwell or whoever. And start taking beautiful pictures of incredibly beautiful Lake County all over. Um, the Photo Voice Project is the one we started off with and we didn't get too many kids on it yet. But we are gonna have um set up a a a little gallery in your lobby. Um, I think we're setting about the twentieth maybe, and um. And and it'll just be there for for people to look and see what the kids have come up with. So we have also guitars, we bought ten guitars. Uh, Grady Vandenberg and Jim Nickel were talking to me about what I had done before in um, when I was in Southern Nevada. Where I had a partnership with the International House of Blues. Guitar is such a, and had kids that wanted to play guitar, but their strings were missing and stuff and I'm like. Okay, well, what about on this, we add that in, so we bought ten guitars, we bought music books, we bought music stands, all of that. And um, and we had Nick Johnson, who, did you know he plays guitar? He's a lot of guitar player. Anyway, so he taught along with his um cohort, um, uh, uh, Ja- um, Jonathan Van Rokel. Who took over when Nick had to be somewhere else, and and we didn't have a lot of kids, uh, but we had kids. And um, they learned to play guitar, I mean, it's 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 a really cool instrument to sit there, it's like a friend. You know, um, when you feel bad, just plucking those strings, just sitting there. Maybe you write bad poetry, you know, maybe you 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 create songs, but they're they're they're, it's a way to help you. Emotionally, it's like, you know, it's like a really good foundation for helping that, right? Get those emotions and out and, you know, it's almost like journal, journaling, normally not. Um, but so we have that as well, and we also funded uh Sources of Strength. Um, at the high school for its second year, we had thirty six kids, I think. I know, we were noisy, I'm sorry, I apologize, I had no idea that they were gonna use the sound system, I kept turning it down a little bit. My bad. Um, I didn't know it would be that noisy, but they had an awesome time. And and we had, uh, I think, ten, eight or ten um adult advisors, some of them from the community and some from the high school. Um. As a side note, the EOCO, Eastern Oregon Coordinated Care um uh grant this year. It started Paisley on its first year of sources. And we trained, along with the adult advisors at the high school, we trained the entire staff at Paisley. And then we trained the entire school the following week at Paisley. And it was really awesome. What what was cool about having the adult staffs together, they'd never been together before and they loved that. And we had the opportunity to say. We kinda felt robbed about the camp and we'd really like to do it again and I put it in my budget for for Oregon Problem Gambling this year. And they're like, yes, we wanna do that, we wanna do it with the Sources kids. The only problem is, if we do all the Sources kids across the whole county, we haven't trained in North Lake yet. But they wanna come on board, we just haven't got a good time for them yet. That would be a lot of kids and it won't happen on my budget, it it, we'd need to do more, so we're still looking at how that works. But it would be really exciting to have all of these kids that are working on campaigns and are really understanding. How um it's good to to look at positive things and strengthen everyone and make them more resilient. And and help those kids that are on the fringe and and help them find a place to belong. Um, so we've got all that going on. I feel like all I've done is spend money mostly. Um, for months, but it's a very, very cool thing. Now, there's one more thing that's coming out of this, oh wait, we also had a big assembly. Uh, we brought in a national speaker to the high school and middle school. And he's like a a really cool dude that's a singer, musician, comedian. Um, and he's um, he's uh getting um some recognition nationally, he's been asked. They're talking to him about making the documentaries and different things, so the kids got pretty excited about it. Um. So I'm talking to Andrea Wishard at the Christ, at the county um seniors that center. And they've been letting us like come out into the big empty-ish basement room outside the studio for the guitar class, that was our agreement, we're renting the studio and. And then we can just use that on occasion. I'm like, you know, we've got money, I I'd really like to see the kids have brainstormed what kind of arts things that they would like to have. We know we don't have a space, um, Christie was doing some interviews about people, um. Uh, um, who who have left town but struggled when they were here. And 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 a lot of that talk came out, I wish we'd had someplace that we felt safe to go. And we know we'd like to have had a youth center before. So I talked to Andrea and she's like, yeah, why don't we make it an art space? Now, we need to let the seniors and utter other folk in as well, but we think, this is not official, but we think that we can get. The downstairs basement fixed up and become an art space and a youth drop-in space. If I can staff it with, you know, I'll start with open studio days on, you know, maybe one day a week, we'll see what the youth task force folk can. Can um free up potentially, but. I think it's a start for something for our young people that we've been wanting, that we haven't had, and I. I can't tell you how potentially excited I am. Um, I'm trying not to get too excited about it, cause it's, you know, not not official, but um. But that's the thinking, is that we can, we can make that space into something like that, and the kids seem excited about it. So um, did I get everything? Alright, I think I got pretty much everything, what do you guys got? Questions?
Good summer.
Huh?
It's a good summer.
That's a lot of stuff, yeah, but it's exciting, isn't it?
Always a good summer.
We've got kids at Sources, we've got a group of kids that wants to do podcasting. That I'm meeting with again tomorrow, that I met with last week, they haven't seen the studio yet. Um, I think once they get in there, it it, you know, it'll be really cool, we also have video. So we, there's a video camera, a green screen, um, all this stuff, and it can be checked out with. Like, probably some staff from us needs to go with, you know, for some of that, but but the DSL cameras will all, so it'll take video. And we have things like, you know, boom mics and things like that for them to take out so that they can have better um quality. And then they have, again, they have the ability to edit that on those uh on those little laptops, so. Uh, we're hoping that that will get things going a little bit, it's not live theater yet, uh, but it's. It it it's just, I think it's really exciting, um, so we're, we have on Thursday. This Thursday, we're we're trying to get a group together to have a strategic like arts planning session, just with some kids and some adults. Involved to say, what would you like to see, how would that work, what are the holes, how could we fill them? In in that um, in that realm, because that's what comes out all the time, is, you know, there aren't enough things for the, for those kids. The other thing is, and luckily the OCF understood this, um, you're talking about a lot of traditionally non-engaged young people. And so um, they kinda stay away in droves. And but I think when we build credibility and we build trust, that we will eventually get. The 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 traffic and the the folk that we're looking for, it's gonna take some time. Because, you know, it's, there's a difference between a family that's like, oh, you know, you have um. You know, you have violin lessons on this day and you have dance on this day, and these are the things you do after school. And a family that kids get out of school and they're they're done, they're free, they can do whatever they want, and they're not used to having programming. Um, so we'll 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 have to let them know that we're, and options available. Uh, Amy Hutchison has had, you know, up to seventeen, twenty kids that show up in rotation after school that just hang there. In the library, and she's been begging for someplace else to have them go. And this is one of the things that we're hoping will um, will help that, there there won't be video games. There will be arts things and, you know, you can talk, you can visit, there, it's not a rec center, it it'll be more quiet. Yeah, and if you want to know more about Sources of Strength, I brought brochures, so that you have that. If you're interested in having a lapel pin, if you were to wear it. Um, it just is a way we've made sure that sources is something that is not just in schools, it's throughout our community, so. Many people have had the one-on-one short version of um sources, so they understand what it's about. Uh, about what that wheel has, these different strengths, so that if someone went into public help or into the library. And a kid felt like that was a trusted adult and they start talking to them about stuff. That adult would know something about it and could help them pivot from the huh to the like, hey, what's getting you going? How are you continuing to walk forward, look at all the things that you're doing that are good, so if you want a button. Uh, I'm happy to have, give you one. Yes, no, I don't wanna give you one if you don't want one, see, Melanie is like, go! Yes, I have lots of them, and if you have other events where you want buttons and things, let me know, cause I want this, I wanna make sure we get it all over our county, so. That's it.
Alrighty, well, I really appreciate you coming over. Francie, to give this presentation, we all appreciate the update.
Yeah, I'm glad you know what's happening, and I know Mr. Albertson, it's been a big thing for you to work with the kids there, and I'm like. Right?
So are you guys partners up with the mentor program too?
Uh, they are, they are in there, um, they were not as active for a while. But now that Donna Palmer is there, she's very interested in in um. Getting up to speed and all that, so she, the youth mentor was one of the original partners uh on the youth task force. So I anticipate that they will continue and and be more involved as we go forward. Yeah, so that means pretty much we've got all of the, except for the base base groups, we have all of the people that um. The organizations that are responsible for working with and kids in enrichment situations uh after school. Involved in the youth task force, and so that seems pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you, Francie.
I have to go to Christmas rally tomorrow.
You are?
I will be at our meeting.
Oh, 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 okay, yeah, well, it's important to go to Christmas rally, yeah.
It's a really nice sweater, by the way, Francie.
Oh, thank you. For a job, not you.
Thank you. Um, so we'd like to move on to, uh, I know we have a timed item. Uh, Michelle, uh, you you could go now, or we can wait five minutes or whatever.
Okay.
Can we take a five minute?
Five minute break, okay, yeah, sure, we'll take a five minute break. Go ahead and reconvene immediately at ten thirty-five. Uh, next up is uh Michelle, very broadband connection with your burn support, good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Very good.
So, um, we have received approval. For uh CTC Technology and Energy, which is, this is just a draft of what they're doing. Um, for uh Burns. John Data Burns, this is theirs, but we asked this company if they would be willing to do. From the border of Carney County. Lake County, soon as we begin to Lake County, pick up and bring it uh. Those planned down to Lakeview, and they said they would, so they're working on it right now. Um, the cost is gonna be around sixty. And the town is left to partner with the county at fifty fifty. For the application process and the engineering and the design. On that, before the February.
So is the application process, uh, um, is that factored into the application? So the the app, the application, excuse me, and the engineering costs and everything, are those factored in together into that sixty thousand?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the total, it it may be sixty-two, but I, or maybe fifty-eight.
Yeah, just.
It's right in that area, it's actually. A hundred fifty thousand, it's gonna be right around six, sixty more. Um, so they're um doing that right now and putting that together for us. I um, I'm putting together just a simple contract. So that we're all on the same page of understanding that town will take care of half of that application process and the county will take care of half. Um, because then if by some odd chance, which I doubt. It it's slim, but I think our chances of getting the application and the grant money are. Highly successful in that area, that percentage, I don't think we're gonna have to go back and apply again. So that way they can see that we're determined and that we're committed to making this happen in this grant cycle.
Yeah.
Go ahead, I know it's gonna be.
No, I just, uh, we just need to be aware that this is a marathon. Um, this isn't a sprint, um, this is the application process. And we still have all the need to do. Things like that.
This is the easy part.
Yeah.
When we're awarded this, I mean, we're lifting some heavy work right now just to get this to a place where they can see how determined we are to get this done. Um, as soon as that grant has been awarded, then the complexity just quadruples. Because we need to figure out. How it's gonna be handled, where the the prefab storage area is gonna be. Um, what what companies will allow or is Lake in and Lakeview, how are we gonna share that ownership, what's our exit strategy? It's got, you know, multiple jurisdictions involved with that, cause it's coming out of Grant County, so we all. It's just very complex.
Yeah.
After that, so, um. You know, op, as soon as we get into that operation part of the grant, is when we're gonna have to be seeing each other a lot more.
So, uh, you know, we have broadband on the SCOED meeting, what is that, Thursday? And that's a topic as well. One of the things, this is the reconnect.
That's correct.
Grant money, uh, which we're also doing railroad, uh, application there too. Um. We do not really have another opportunity to apply for a reconnect. In Lake County without getting on to a company like. Uh, Grant.
Correct.
Cause we wouldn't be able to, cause you have to do the, uh, engineering and all that needs to be complete.
Correct.
Uh, before you can apply.
That's correct.
So there's a pretty good amount of money with reconnect out there.
Mm-hmm.
For this particular round. And for broadband. And this gets us with our handout there able to get started.
Exactly. I, I think what I'm most excited about for this is that. We're, we're gonna get in for twenty twenty-two and have broadband put through. It also gets everybody's feet wet on how that works. So that when you are then working on your next grant cycle with Clamath County and Lake County. You're gonna understand, and I'll understand, and, you know, everybody's gonna know that. Complexity and nuances of what needs to get done to be successful for that secondary grant to be awarded. So, and I think that's really invaluable to be able to. Go pretty confidently into a next grant cycle to bring in a redundant line and, um. I'm, I think that's exciting. Cause I, I'm new to the broadband game, but I don't. I just know that we're trying to get the fastest speed and the fastest way at the fastest pace possible. So, um, and I know where the money's at.
To attract business, to attract.
Everything.
Yeah.
Everything, um, to start to promote our city. We also can increase, um, our infrastructure with a P-SaaS and our, uh, ability. For, um, emergency services can tap into that broadband. Um, so we'll have.
We'll work from home.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, it's really exciting. Um, so phase one, what we're in, we'll get all the. Um, information and engineering and construction completed for this forward.
So the sixty thousand is just for the engineering?
Correct.
And the application.
You have a higher probability of getting the grant awarded if you have a plan.
Kinda gets you to a show ready.
Not just a, yeah, not just a plan like we can do this, but this is what we will do.
Yeah, well, here's, it's been engineered. This is the plan. This is where we are. This is where it would go, and it's feasible.
Yes. Like we're.
It gives surety.
Right, and determination, like, we're going.
Shows buy-in, that we've already made a contribution to the program, so.
Yeah, and that we're doing our homework, and that we're consulting reputable firms to help us. Um, and that we're working together with not only as Lake County and Lakeview, but with Harney. Burns, Hines, Harney County, Grant County. It, it's very unique. And shows a lot of determination, I think.
Yeah, so, you know, one option for this thirty thousand that the county could commit from. Is ARPA money from SCOED. So that would be harmless. It's money we didn't have anyway. And they're, they're sitting on a chunk of money for Lake County and broadband would be a good auction there. So thirty thousand, so I start, uh, to do that, if we so choose to do that. That's what I was thinking. Um, you know, what's gonna be interesting is our conversation with SCOED. You know, how are we gonna get off the schneid here and get Lake County started? You know, are we gonna have a project manager? Are we gonna have? You know, what, what, what is the plan? Are we gonna hire a company to, uh, develop? How Lake and Clamath County slowly come on board broadband or not, you know?
Cause our master plan is about four times higher than everybody expected.
Correct.
I know, I did.
Do Clamath and County continue to be a partner, or maybe we're better off just being Lake County? Those are hard questions we need to ask.
So quick question on the process of Thursday, is ours, it's a SCOED and SCOAC meeting, SCOED the first part of the day, or are we rotating that around?
Schedule is emailed down.
Okay, I just.
I think it's at nine.
It starts at nine, I just didn't know.
This discussion will be out pretty much.
I think SCOED always goes first, and then SCOED, that's my experience, I think.
Yeah. I, I think you're right, Michelle. I think, I thought we sometimes, we don't do, we don't back and forth, but.
Me too.
So, couple of problems that I. Obstacles. So, we want broadband for all Lake County, not just Lakeview. And I definitely wanna get broadband in twenty-two for sure. Part of the engineering, before I would go for it, would be, they have a T at. Christmas Valley Highway. And so we can eventually T off that and we get it into Christmas Valley, into North Lake.
And we go along county roads that we have right away, right?
And I, I hate to bring up political stuff, but I'm going to a little bit for the town. We wanted you guys to partner with us with the nuisance, and you guys didn't. You kinda shot us in the foot there, and, um, we ended up taking the whole bill. And I'm not gonna use that, but I just wanna bring that to your attention, that. Sometimes we wanna be partners with you on different projects also. And I wanna be partners with Lakeview, the town of Lakeview. But just remember that sometimes it's a give or take, and, um, we really needed you guys on that deal. We went through with it anyways, and it's a political deal, but, um. I think that's back to our intention, just so we remember, you know, sometimes we're gonna need your guys' help too. And I wanna be better partners with the town of Lakeview, and I feel like we're kinda fractured. And I don't know what we need to do to make that better. And so those are some of my concerns. Just be inscribed.
May I be straight up with you?
You're right.
Alright. Our problem with the nuisance officer was that I want, we needed more information. And, and let me map that out just a little bit, cause I've talked to Barry about it. Because it wasn't about the money, it wasn't about anything other than what we were asking for, which we didn't get. And that was just a simple outline, even if it was a, a six-month program of, okay, well. During this time, he, this person is gonna be in training, don't expect anything. Um, but come March first, he's gonna be here, here, and here, and here, here, and here, here, and here. And I get, it's only a third, but that doesn't mean anything to me. A third of the month, or however that would look, I don't know how it would look. That's why we said no, cause. And how would you communicate to us? Where are the tickets going? How, how do we know what part of the city he's, he's gonna, you know, take care of? What does that communication line back and forth to us? We didn't get that either. And we asked, so, what I'm trying to do is to build a bridge again. Because I think that we would make great partners. I really do.
Well, if you remember, I sent close to twelve emails. I sent you the BEN. Um, how the BEN code enforcement worked.
Uh-huh.
I sent you several, and I sent.
I know.
Uh, along with you thanking me for sending you that information. On the part about the, how are we gonna keep track is. We felt like we would be micromanaging the employee to do their job. And so, there's gotta be some trust, Michelle, and so.
But what you sent me was for BEN, not for Lakeview.
Well, we didn't have, we didn't have Lakeview's code ordinances.
So what I expected.
And so I sent you the ones that we're going to back them on. And I, I don't wanna go back.
No, 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 I get it, but alls I'm saying is, it was just an information dump. So, I'm coming to you, and I'm gonna give you every single piece of information that I get. Every email, and I'm gonna then come to you and say, here's the map. We're gonna go into construction on this day, and this is how it looks. Boom, 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 boom. And then while that's going on, I'm gonna send you a YAP chart, what construction company we're using, what, what, who is this, what is this about? Instead of just dumping information to you, I'm gonna show you. With organization of how this is gonna come about. Because right now I'm saying, I'd like to do this. It's, it's pie in the sky, it's huge. But as soon as I get my engineering, I'm gonna put that together for you, and I'm gonna say, this is how it is. And here's the dates that we would like to do, and, and what we'll be doing on those dates. Here's what the application is, everything that is on it. Would you like to review it, or do you wanna just let me go ahead and move forward? Here's the bullet points, boom, boom, boom. This is the time and date that needs to be submitted by. And here's what your thirty thousand dollars is paid for, and I'm gonna map every single nut and bolt and screw out for you. So that you don't have a question, then it's just gonna go thirty thousand dollars, and it's quite a bit of money, and you don't trust me. So I've gotta build that with you, one hundred percent, and there's no reason for you to trust me. Because I haven't been performing based on your feedback to me. I haven't been performing in an adequate way.
So.
And so I, and so Barry and I talked, and I'm like, you know what, why don't I put together a schedule? Why don't, why don't I help you see what I needed? And maybe we can pick it up and talk about it again, because apparently I failed. In not giving correct information about what I needed back to you. But I thought I.
I think we both, I think both sides, I think the town and the county need to fix some things.
We do.
So we have a better relationship. That's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to point the blame on anyone.
Well.
Because we both, I feel, I guess I didn't understand exactly what information you wanted, maybe, and so. But let's, let's not, let's go back to.
Yeah, we're a little off topic here on this.
So, but alls I'm saying is, at this point, this project, my intention is twofold. One, we need broadband, we need it now, we need to get in this grant cycle. This is the project, this is the route. This is the instrument. I'm part of that instrument. And relationships between the town and the commissioners are, is fractured, it doesn't work. It is not working. My secondary goal is to fix it from my end. And, and to have this project move forward. So that we can start working together, instead of oppositionally and territorial. And sticks and stones, whatever, I, I'm done with it, I don't wanna do that anymore. So I'm coming here saying I have, I have everything that you guys need. And I, I wanna do this. And I wanna do it in, in the reason is, you need it, it's a redundant process, and it's. Gonna be benefit both of us. And I want, I want a better relationship with you.
Uh, we got Steven Vance on the line too. Uh, Steven, do you wanna give any comment? Uh, how this potentially could help us with this broadband license?
We can't hear you if you're speaking.
He's on there.
Yeah, he's, he's on there, but he's, uh, just cause he.
No, uh, if Steven's not here, so. I don't know if people completely understand broadband, but, you know, right now we have like Central Lake here.
You can hear that. Oh, there we go.
Can you guys hear me now? Sorry.
Yeah, good.
I'm sorry, you guys can't hear me?
Yeah, no, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, from the, from the hospital's point of view, um, and it, it's extremely beneficial for us. And as you guys know, I've been working on this for a while with you guys, from different people, um, on our broadband. Uh, committee that we first started a couple of years ago, but, um, yeah, I fully, I fully support this. And I know that Ken Kessler, who's on the, the board for the hospital, also, uh, supports this one hundred percent too. Um, I mean, the only thing that I wanted to stress and, and reiterate is the need for a PM. Um, it'll be interesting to see, um, how that's all gonna pan out, like you said, Barry. Um, knowing, uh, the partnership with SCOED and as if they need some kind of solid commitment. With Lake County and Clamath County, even though we're going north on three ninety-five into Burns, it'll be interesting to see that. I know that Nick Green also mentioned in the last call that we had, that he would be the interim PM for us. I don't know if you recall him saying that, uh, until we get something solid in, in, in the plans for a, for a project manager. And, uh, all I know is, in the years that I've been in IT, um, the more complex this is, the more difficult it is to manage. And, um, you're definitely going to be needing a, a project manager, um, as we move forward with this. But I'm, uh, fully supportive of this, um, you know, to make it official on the record, but, uh. It's something that the hospital is very interested in, uh, in, in making happen.
Steve, can you just kinda comment of why we would want another company to have broadband into Lake, Lake County?
Well, you know, um, I could ask Nick that too as well, and, um, it creates a level of competitiveness. Uh, it tells others such as Zayo that we mean business, and we're, we're here to stay, and we are going to, uh, move forward. Uh, whether they like it or not, and, uh, it actually creates more competition from the people that are coming into Lake County. Makes prices more competitive, from what I understand. And, uh, actually starts to get the process going, and, um, not only, you know, I mean, cause this opportunity to go north into Burns. I feel is a, uh, in, in the, in the, in the years that I've been doing this, in five years of trying this. This is the first real opportunity that has ever come up. Uh, I don't recall any other real solid opportunity to get a secondary redundant fiber optic line. Or lines into Lake County, making us less dependent on that, that fiber optic spur coming from Clamath Falls into Lakeview. Um, this'll, this'll increase the, uh, improve the infrastructure, increase services, make, make prices eventually more competitive. And, and tell the industry, the broadband industry, or the people that are involved, or have a, 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 some service or a level service in Lakeview, that we're, we're moving forward. And it gives us an opportunity to, to take that next step, uh, and it shows people that we're real serious and we have a plan. Does that, does that answer your question?
You bet. Yep, that's for me.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
So I guess my question might be to Michelle, but where does the. Where's Grant County getting their broadband? Cause, cause it's gonna go from Grant County to Harney County to Lake County. And so where's their power, their broadband coming?
Theirs is coming, uh, actually John Day owns the digital network, and so it's gonna be coming from their fiber. Which is why we need a, a contract once it gets to the point where we're actually in build. That we own it from Lake County all the way down, and that's ours, even though we're connected into. Um, multi-jurisdictional fiber line, when it gets here, it's ours.
That's good news.
Yes, I think so. I'm gonna be a little greedy on like, that, you don't get to touch, this is not our, 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 our. We paid for it, it's ours, and we say, we say how it's.
Used.
Like we say, how it gets used. And we own it, instead of having, uh, isn't some of the problems with the SCOED RFP that just, whatever, they wanted to own the line?
Yeah, so this isn't a big-time company. This is a smaller, you know, smaller company, uh, trying to do some good things. You know, to me, I think there's a lot of risk here. Uh, you know, we are gonna put out thirty thousand dollars. The town's gonna put out thirty thousand dollars, and we may get told no, we may have to apply again next year or the next round.
But we're gonna be learning the whole process.
We're gonna be learning and refine, and, uh.
We're, we're not, nothing else going.
We're on somebody else's radar.
Yeah.
You know?
Right.
Cause Lake County is prayer.
It is, it, it is, and you could be doing in parallel processes that as you are learning, we're learning on this one, step by step. Then you go and apply it to this other part, whether you continue with Clemeth, or you say Lake County owns it, or you're just gonna do it, because, you know, how. Right, like we know how, we've got, we're connected with people who've already done it. It's, we're gonna do it ourselves, cause we can get it done faster and better and more efficiently. But that's, you know, that's a possibility, I'm not saying that that's what you're gonna do, but it is a really great opportunity.
Yeah, and like you say, even if, uh, you know, making this investment, even if we get told no the first go around, we have a written project that we can make a secondary application.
We'll get it, some, we will get it.
Right.
Eventually.
But we have a plan in place that we can utilize, look for other opportunities. Okay, uh, so this is on the agenda for action and consideration, um, but we wanna take an action on this today.
I'm fine. I'll make a motion, uh, we accept proposal.
Okay.
My only branch.
How about, how about, uh, fifty thou, fifty percent?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
I'm in my, I'm in my motion to fifty percent of the project costs. This initial project.
Okay. Motion on the table?
I second.
Motion made and seconded.
Do we need to, oh.
And we'll use the, how do those go in?
That was, that was my question for discussion, is where we're going to actually use the dollars, and where they're coming from.
So with that, the money's gotta be allotted by twenty twenty-four, and it has to be spent by twenty twenty-six. I don't think that's gonna be a problem for you, but those are some of the rules on this particular item, so.
I will spend it February with two, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
About that.
All right.
Thank you, let's mend the bridge.
So for the motion, can we add the name of the company here? I'm trying to put.
Yeah, to amend the motion to include the name of the company.
There's two, right, the engineering and the CTC and.
The engineering is C, as in Charlie, T as in Tom, C as in Charlie, CTC, Technology and Energy.
That's who it works for.
That's who it works with, Ed John Day, Nick Green.
Or do we just?
A minute, it's, you, because it's a mandate.
And all the US. Steve, all those people that we have on the phone, should be working back to me.
But what I'm thinking is, is that we're in an area that is with the town. Do we just, with the town, or with the, do you see what I'm saying?
You lead, okay.
And, and.
I think, I think we are going to.
What do you suggest?
I suggest that I keep you guys informed and that we meet more often.
Yeah.
How about that?
So you'll. Now we'll take the lead.
We'll take the lead, I'll do the heavy lifting.
So.
And then in February, we're gonna have to talk about how, what, how that looks after the submission is made, and how long we have to wait. And then if we're awarded, we need to map out how that's gonna work before the award comes, because once it comes, we wanna.
There may be additional costs.
We just wanna get towards.
So this is, this is where I think, you know, as long as we're having additional discussion, we need to formalize an actual intergovernmental agreement between us, so that we have it very clear as to, especially when we're talking about being the owner of this, uh, infrastructure and the fiber.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're be joint owners with the town.
Correct. I have a, I have a contract being made right now.
Okay, so that's something that I think we, you know, we're, we're taking a leap of faith here, I think, but I think it's appropriate, working with the town like you. And I think that, uh, we just need to make sure that we can get that contract or agreement in place as soon as we can, so that we know where we're going, and that our public know where we're going.
I will be doing that in about twenty-five minutes.
And, and my only addition to the comment would be, I definitely want the T, that's Christmas Valley, I, I want that.
It's called a node.
Thank you, cause I don't.
I learned that.
I don't, I don't know.
I learned that the last.
I go by phony.
We're gonna know that at Christmas Valley.
So, so you're fine with that?
Yeah.
Having a node in the Christmas Valley.
Of course, I, I anticipate a bit.
Yeah.
I also anticipate that, uh, another possibility is to branch it over to Paisley.
And noted Alkali Lake, Bodon, Valley Falls.
That would be amazing.
Yeah.
So I, I have that in my head already, um, because it makes sense.
I think it's important to make sure that the off-ramp in, uh, at the Christmas Valley turnoff though, has enough capacity. Uh, you know, I don't know how much capacity that you need to have, you know, for the off-ramp in, uh, say, a place like Alkali Lake or wherever, but, um, we wanna make sure that wherever we're going to put those off, that there's potential there to.
Yeah.
It's not just a something, you know.
Not, not only that, potential capacity.
Well, that, that's true, you know, I mean, that's something that we consider when we're building line anywhere that is. It's a lot easier to pull line later than to dig it up and lay another fiber line.
Agreed, which is why I'm trying to think ahead as, as Lake County, because it's not just Lakeview, it's in this, this project, it's Lake County. So how could we get broadband sooner to Paisley to Christmas Valley to, because we're, we're there.
Right. Sounds just enough, okay, well, so we have a motion on the table, we have a second. Um, uh, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you for being.
Thank you so much.
And you'll continue liaising with Commissioner Schumberger.
I'll do, yep.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Don. All right, so.
I'm gonna eat your lunch later.
Cause you and I are gonna have a little talk.
Anytime, anytime, sister.
Yeah, I could tell.
I still, I still love you.
Oh, this has nothing to do with that, I put that on the back burner. You're still Uncle Mark, but I'm gonna eat you for lunch later.
Bye.
Bye, guys.
See you, guys. Um, we're gonna move down to BLM cooperating agency, MOU, uh, for Sage grouse EIS. I'm gonna try and knock that out, um, this is on the letter, I, I think it's a good letter. Uh, the only thing that I was thinking that maybe we, um, include, uh, within the subject matter, or within the actual, uh, last sent, last line on the paragraph. Says land management and serve as a cooperating agency for the Sage grouse EIS work under the current MOU. Because nowhere in the letter does it mention, um, Sage grouse, or is it specific on that type of work? So I was just wondering if maybe we can include that, I had that in my notes, I forgot to circle back with one of you guys earlier. Just a suggestion.
Say that again now.
So just, uh, incorporating in that last line on the main paragraph where it says, uh, Bureau of Land Management and s- and serve as a cooperating agency for the EIS under the current MOU, where you would just insert like Sage grouse EIS work.
Yeah, but the EIS, doesn't it, it includes more of just Sage grouse?
Is it, is it, is it Sage grouse specific though? That's the, I, I, I thought that was the main reason why this EIS work, the environmental impact study was being done.
Well, Sage grouse focal areas, uh, that are focused on bigger sage grouse in the town.
So.
I'm into the addition.
I don't know.
I think we could come up with sentence that includes that, where you're talking.
Yeah, just, yeah, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with the letter, I, I think it's important that we actually send it, I, I just thought. It's nowhere in the letter, but is it specific? If they got both of these in the same packet, you know, I suppose they can, you know, draw their own conclusions, but if
Yeah, we don't.
They get separated, like, what is this for exactly? So which EIS?
The intent is that we continue to be.
Involved in the process, right?
That we don't get cut out of the deal.
Yeah, because they have lots of MOUs, and this is, you know, it might help make it a little bit more specific.
Good addition.
Okay. Other than that, I'm, uh, I'm good with it.
Do you wanna do a motion now, or?
Um, no, we can, uh, we could, we can save that for tomorrow. And we need to have that.
Then we'll have the addition on the draft.
Sure. Okay.
Copy that.
Um, next up, I'm gonna bang out a few of these other things, Fifth Amendment to OHA agreement, um, this is, uh, one six six zero four six. Ellen, do you have an update on this, or, like I said, I didn't get a chance to look over it.
It's, uh, six thousand dollars for aid and assistance, I believe it says.
For what?
Aid and assistance for Remy.
Okay.
It's another six thousand dollars for the.
In the black.
Problem, problem handling addiction.
This is mainly, this is going through mental health, correct? Okay, any questions on this?
I'm here.
Okay, then we will move on to, um, uh, ru- uh, let's go, let's get the Dollar General OLCC application, did you guys take a look at that?
Yes.
Okay, I actually thought that was kinda interesting. They were applying for that, they, they, they checked the box for off premises.
But that, so that means, they, they can, can't consume on premises.
Got it, so it's basically, it's just, if they're selling here, right.
They buy it out of the store.
Yeah.
It's beer and wine.
Right, gotcha, okay.
So this is for the new store in Christmas Valley?
Mm-hmm. And actually, I think they're kinda waiting on this, so if you don't mind here, but we take your.
We take action right now? Sure, absolutely, I'll entertain a motion on the, uh, OLCC application for the Dollar General in Christmas Valley.
We'll make a motion to accept the OLCC, uh, application from the Dollar General in Christmas Valley. It's actually from BG Retail LLC, and it's Dollar General Store number twenty-two nine three eight.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So we've got three different places to go, I just wanna, um, I'm, I'm gonna need to take out, take off out of here early, uh, but, uh, let's, let's get Jake, let's go over to Jason, so that we can kind of cover him, I know you're here, so.
And real quickly on the low boy for the department, Kevin's gonna try to be there, but if he's got a place, no, then he won't be there.
Gotcha.
So I just handed you there's a draft of the, what, what could be used for a compliance hearings officer, uh, position. Uh, just to summarize it, it's, it's a strictly voluntary position, unpaid. It would be for disputing, um, for handling, for helping to mediate disputes in the building department between somebody who we would believe is in violation of ordinances and building code violations. Before a citation would be issued, they get the, the person would get to make their case with the compliance hearing officer, who would then decide if either the person's out of line, or if the building department's out of line, and if we can proceed with a citation or not.
So this is part of the appeal process for people that might receive a citation or a warning letter?
Yeah, it's not something that would be used very often, uh, but it, it is strictly for the building department, doesn't apply to nuisance or land use or any, anybody else, it's just for building. It's in compliance with a new, uh, bill that passed, the state passed this year. So it's given that dispute, uh, rights to, to the, uh, property person.
So do you recommend it be somebody that isn't employed by the county to make it look fair?
My, my suggestion would be that we reach out to some of the retired or soon to be retired contractors first, before we solicit to the general public, but it should be somebody who is not a county employee, doesn't have to be, but if they're not paid by the county full-time, then it gives them that level of separation to be, uh, fair and unbiased.
What about a retired judge, sorts?
If they have a background in construction and building code and unders- as long as they have the knowledge to understand whether it's from you know, years of personal experience or professional experience, as long as they under- can understand what the codes are, and why something's being violated.
Gotcha, okay.
So we're, we're working on putting together a list of potential candidates for it, but ultimately they have to agree to volunteer on that.
Okay.
I can steal a couple more minutes of your time, just to kind of go over the department, uh, issues, I know that's scheduled for later, but we'll be leaving.
Can we stay, can we stay on this just a little?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So this is, uh, you said this is a generally a volunteer position?
Yes, I haven't found anything that allows it to be a paid part-time, it's all under the same rules as like planning, uh, board and whatnot, where it's voluntary with mileage. It's basically only reversible, yeah. So if I, if I find something that allows it to be paid part-time, I'll, I'll definitely publish that for you, but for right now, it's, everything I'm finding is saying voluntary.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I've emailed each of you the, my, my proposals for camping ordinance and, uh, the updates, ordinance one sixteen for the nuisance. I'm not too concerned with things like how many days of camping, or how many days of notification, my, a recommendation for notification is at least fourteen, just because it takes that long to mail to get through, but if you wanted to push it out further, I wouldn't, it doesn't really matter, uh, from my perspective. Same thing with the camping, if you'd rather be fourteen days, uh, with a permit, or twenty-one, or twenty-eight, as long as there's a solid limitation in the bill, uh, we're not too worried about how many days it is, as long as it's clearly defined. Uh, one thing I would like to alter in the nuisance, uh, update, is any language about things like eyesore or annoyance versus quality of life, safety. I wanna avoid people calling just cause they're mad at their neighbor and looking for a reason to throw them under the bus, to actually have something related to fire, life, safety, health, sanitation, or quality of life. So if you're doing something that's preventing your neighbor from sleeping properly, or living, you know, uh, if it's interfering with how they're, how they are in their house, that could be a nuisance violation, but if you just don't like somebody's car with a crack in the windshield, uh, as annoyance or eyesore, I want that language removed.
Right, it's, you know, remove the frivolous, you know, complaints about hitches, not even true.
Exactly, it's leave it to things that are a direct safety hazard or quality of life. Um, that, that's my, uh, that's what I'm asking for, and maybe that, as you're reviewing the, the new ordinance one sixteen.
So, I, I totally agree with you. But like if they have three, four, five, or more junk cars.
That's specifically addressed in the ordinance of how many vehicles you can have per property, um, so that, that, that's addressed separately, but it's not addressed as an eyesore, specifically under a category of junk vehicles. So things, things like that, we can spell out, and there, there's a lot more definitions in, in what I've sent you guys than what was in the previous one. Uh, it's mainly the, I don't like that my neighbor's storing his old RV. So what, it's got a license plate, it's registered, it's mobile, he can store it, as long as it's within the ordinance. But that kind of stuff is what we're trying to head off, is like, uh, James says, the frivolous stuff, we wanna keep it to the real things.
Is there stuff in the, uh, is there rubbish, uh, talking about agriculture, like, uh, you could have several pieces of equipment to farm with and whatnot?
Most of that is more or less implied inside of the zoning, whether it's for the agriculture, or what's allowed in a rural residential agriculture-wise. It's, if it's not spelled out specifically in those articles, it is implied that. It's, if it's not spelled out specifically in those articles, it is implied that.
The intent was for agriculture.
Agriculture was exempt, I believe, in many of those cases, in agricultural.
Yeah, um, I don't think there's a need to spell out that you can keep agricultural vehicles on your property, but if we need to, we can add something in there saying that they're specifically.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking.
Uh, uh, as from my, my interpretation is they're adding in their saying.
It's still good.
Okay, so those are, those, um, two things on camping, uh, nuisance ordinance. The last thing was just an idea about, um, how to get rid of these junk vehicles and campers. I've reached out to, uh, Cascade Auto Recycling. They're setting up a, another facility in Clamath. They're gonna put together a cost estimate for us of what, what the cost would be if we were to say dump ten vehicles at the, uh, at the landfill here, what would it cost for them to remove them, so that we can create a fee schedule for people bringing in the cars? Then I also asked them about an idea if we had, if we say set aside a hundred acres up north, um, off, outside of the highway to dump all the, um, RVs and, and junk cars into. Would they, would the, uh, scrap metal prices ever be worth it for them to come in for free and take them? And they said absolutely. If the prices are now, like, the prices right now, they would be coming in for free to take them off of a site like that. So, that is something that could be realistic, even if it takes us time to set up and, uh, scrap metal prices fluctuate, of course. But it could be conceivable in the future as well that they would be able to do this, if not on a regular basis, at least every couple of years. When the prices are adequate, they would come in and clean up all the vehicles. So it's just something to think about as, uh, as we move forward and have to put these vehicles somewhere. If we foreclose on any properties or do any payments where the county's cleaning them up, if we have a place to store them, they will eventually come take them for free.
I don't think we could take cars out to the landfill. And so I think it's, we have to talk to Dave.
There's stuff with DMV that, there's a couple of steps in between. But if people are willing to surrender them out there, there, there's already a way, if you, if you strip out the car, you have the title, you strip out all the wiring harnesses and seats and stuff, the, the landfill can take them as just a metal hulk. But, um, you wouldn't have to do all that work if Cascade was picking it up. It's more about getting, dealing with the title and making sure you can surrender the vehicle, getting a label that's junk or clearing it with DMV. It'd be passed out to the next person. So there's some, some steps in there, some administrative stuff, but once that's cleared, the vehicle could.
But the DEQ will allow us to take vehicles out.
So it might not be at the actual landfill site, but what I think you're talking about is a separate piece of property that's separate from the landfill.
So those were the two ideas, but one could be for a separate piece of property up there, the other is if they're already the auto reci- the metal recycling are already coming here.
Right.
To have a collection plan. The landfill was my first thought, but if DEQ won't allow it, we didn't.
I might wanna talk to Dave Berman, because I don't think we can take cars out there even for storage, but.
Yeah.
Because of DEQ, DEQ regulations, but you'll have to check with them.
And that's, th- those are details I'll keep working as we go forward, but the bigger thing for me was getting a cost estimate from Cascade so that we can have a, a fee schedule ready when we do find a location and get implemented solution so that people are willing to comply and get rid of their junk vehicles, a happy place to take it. Cause right now, there's not, not a lot of solution for them. So that's, that's the ultimate thing. So as I get that fee schedule together, I'll talk to DEQ when he comes back up here, uh, cause he comes up about once a month or so and I'll see what we can figure out as far as a big place to put them, but.
Did you talk to the guy that we, I showed you on the?
Not yet. I'll, I'll, I'll come find you later in the week for his, his location. I, gotta, gotta show me where it's at. But, uh, I'll, I'll be reaching out.
Darwin, Darwin knows, cause Darwin showed me.
Okay.
It's in North Lake Clear.
Okay.
It's off the Christmas Valley highway. I, I don't, I don't know who owns that property, but Doc Darwin does.
Okay. Alright, that's, that's everything I got.
That was perfect.
Alright, thank you.
See you guys later.
Yeah. Uh, next up, uh, River Democracy Act.
Okay, so, uh, just a little background here, uh, Senator Wyden and Senator Merkley have been, uh, proponents of the River Democracy Act. It's a, it's a fluid act at this point. Their, uh, Senator Wyden staffer has told us that how it sits now is not, uh, set in stone. Uh, that rivers and streams could come and go out of the act, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and we've had those kind of discussions. They, uh, are, have told us to make them a proposal, you know, of what we potentially can live and can't live without. My strategy here, guys, is let's go a hundred percent out. And let's say we want all of Lake County removed from the River Democracy Act.
Right.
Um, I've created, helped, uh, put together, uh, a letter that, um, emphasizes the need for, uh, keeping our sawmill open. This River Democracy Act would be more restrictive. Currently, the boundary is three hundred feet on each side of the stream, and this would open it up to a half mile on each side of the stream. Or river, and that would be very, uh, difficult for us to continue in the forest, to continue to have quality timber sales that, uh, our local mill could bid on, that would give us volume. Um, the second thing is, uh, cattle. Um, I did some, had some research done and looked into it. Uh, darn near every one of our, uh, rivers and streams that are identified in the current, uh, RDA for Lake County have a, some type of a permit attached or, or close by to it. Uh, so we have twenty-nine segments in Lake County. And most of all of them have a cattle permit, uh, associated with. And I've, uh, pointed out in the letter, uh, just how important, uh, cattle is to industry, that it raises fifty million dollars to our annual county revenue. And at peak, uh, cattle season, we have over eighty thousand head cat, uh, cattle in the valley in the county. We have approximately two hundred and twenty-five cattle ranches in Lake County. So, uh, the importance of this is, is very important. Uh, if it becomes an act and have, it goes before the courts and whatnot, there's no guarantee that current permits on federal lands will be kept. And so that is a major, major concern. Senator Wyden has said that his intent is not to remove cattle permits, but he can't guarantee that. And so that is the area of emphasis. Third piece I've been kinda working on is, as you all know, the forest has collaborative forest land. What CFLRP, uh, collaborative forest land restoration projects. And, uh, Lake County's been very fortunate to be on the receiving end of that money in the past several years. And if the River Democracy Act were to go into place and the restrictions along streams and rivers were to be, uh, implemented, this would severely alter and, uh, limit our ability to do restoration, good restoration work in and near these streams that we need to work there here locally. Unless yours buyers use the grubs, how bad would you be? Correct. So. You guys, I, I'm not ready to, uh, have this be signed, because it's still got a tiny bit of work that needs to be done today or tomorrow, but, uh, here in the near future, if you guys are good with that by consensus.
I'm good with a hundred percent.
Yeah. Yeah, a hundred percent, no problem. I, I, I don't want any of our rivers included. I'm not settling for fifty percent or any of this other stuff. And I think that even if we do get a hundred percent of our rivers removed, I think we still should continue to advocate for other counties and work with them.
Yeah. I guess where I'm going here, guys, is we don't, if we're gonna make a, a pitch for Lake County to remove all our rivers and streams from the RDA, we need to have some good reasons behind it. And timber, cattle, and landscape restoration that's currently going on, those are three very legitimate reasons, and we need to bring a strong, you know, reason why. I think in the big picture, the River Democracy Act is pretty small in Lake County compared to other counties. I agree that we do need support of other counties, but it's not a deal breaker if they are removed from Lake County, in my opinion.
And then the one other thing, uh, it adds more bureaucracy to our own Fremont, like you mentioned.
Absolutely.
And so, they would have to deal with.
This work.
It's just craziness.
That's absolutely right.
And, and the whole Ri- River Democracy Act focuses all on Eastern Oregon, right? I don't think there's a Western Oregon stream or river in that. I thought that button, unless I missed something.
I can't remember, but I, I think you're right.
Yeah.
And so. Throwing out the political piece again is.
Everything east of the Cascade.
Eastern Oregon doesn't have the voice that Western Oregon does strictly because of the population. And so politically, if they can make it look good to their, um, environmental supporters, they don't get our vote anyway, and so that's, politically, that's why we're doing it in Western Oregon, it's my belief, but.
Yes, you're correct, though, uh, federal agencies, so in Lake County, it affects three federal agencies. For Fremont, Anana, Lake District, BLM, and Sheldon Hall. And, uh, all three of them already have, uh, land management rules and restrictions in place to protect rivers and streams. And this would be in addition to what's already there. They don't have the workforce or the time. And another factor is if the infrastructure bill comes along and it gets approved, those federal agencies are also being asked to implement and implement now for those type of things. So they don't have time to go back and do more restrictive things, so. We need to be implementing dollars on the ground to help for longevity of our forests and our, uh, federal lands.
And we all received a letter from Congressman Betts in opposition of this act. So.
And make that public.
Been a lot of friction on that front.
Between the Congress and the Senate. And so.
Yeah.
I just wanna throw that and make it public.
Okay. Yeah.
But thank you for your work on that. Appreciate it.
We'll see where it goes.
Yeah. Whenever you get to the final round, love to see it. I, I have other comments, so it'll be perfect. Alright, um, last item for discussion, Greater Idaho letter to state legislators.
So, this was an EOC A, uh, request from all the Eastern Oregon counties, uh, asking that we have that discussion about Greater Idaho, that we bring this attention, uh, to the state level, that hey, most all the counties now that were identified in the Greater Idaho Plan are, have approved discussions with commissioners, the three meetings, uh, to have those discussions about Greater Idaho. I'd like for, uh, Greater Idaho to be recognized at the state level. So that discussions can either continue or fade out, you know, but, um. I think we've had good discussions here locally. We have one more, I think, on the docket. Got two, right?
I think, yeah. Yeah, we, we do, are they quarterly or three times a year? January, I think, is our.
Just three months a year.
Okay.
So, anyway, uh, we've had good discussions locally, but I think that's where a, a lot of counties are at. Good discussion, but where do we go from here? Just asking the state and our state representatives to take a look at this. See that we've got friction in Oregon.
I, I believe it's time because the state of Idaho has been talking about it for a while, as a state. And from what I understand, their state representatives are for it. So it's time to at least get ours, our representatives, senators talking with Idaho's and see how we can solve some of these problems with pures, with our highway system, you know, all the questions that we had prior. So I, I believe it's time. I would be totally supportive of signing that.
Think we can give some, uh, a little more specifics from EOC A.
Yeah, dude, we're, I, I don't know if I've actually looked at the letter, um, so I'd like to look at it first.
There is one. But, uh, I think it was just an ask to have this conversation.
And then kind of formulate a letter.
Formulate a letter.
Based on the.
We agreed to it.
And all four of you, Phil Harvey, Commissioner Chair from Baker County, said this last weekend.
Okay.
Has everyone seen one? And he made some very great points, and so.
Well, it's interesting. It'd be interesting to hear his perspective, because he's Baker County Commissioner, and they're right on the border of Idaho, they do a lot of business with them, so.
Yeah, he made some great points. I'll get all four of them on to you guys as well.
Alright, perfect. Alright, um, maybe we'll have to wait for it, but. Uh, we'll be up in North Lake, obviously, tomorrow morning at, uh, ten AM. Community hall.
We've got our Lee Burman.
Um, but I'm, I'm going home tonight, so.
But I figured.
Yeah, I'm trying to get ahead of the weather. So, uh, but yeah. Thank you, guys. Really good discussion today, good topics. We will adjourn the meeting at eleven thirty-six.